We're at 7:05 or whatever time it is and salute to the flag, we're on our own. Okay, flags back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
The voice of God, I would like you to stand just for a moment, just for a moment. As all you know, either through a board email or through emails to faculty, staff, or families, Beecher Road School was a very special person over the weekend, one of our students, and we want to remember that student tonight and that family who's near and dear to us as well, just with a moment of silence and your own personal, private thoughts, so if you could just do that right now. Thank you.
Okay, correspondence, Megan?
No, not this one.
Okay, and before we get into the details of the agenda, I just wanted to say welcome to Todd, he's our new Board of Education representative, so thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck. Consent agenda, oh.
Aren't we calling you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, she was gonna call your phone, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Was she gonna call your phone?
I sent her an email over the weekend saying, please call Claire's cellphone.
Really? Okay, I'm happy to do that.
I'm sorry, I kind of assumed when she had asked, I said that was probably our, we don't have conference calls.
No, that's great, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, we usually do, cellphones sometimes work if you put it in your microphone.
I don't think she's aware of that, is that what?
Well, I sent it to her, I don't, I didn't get a response back, but I-
She's handled my emails, we go with that.
Oh, great, okay.
You're calling her, she's calling us. Okay, so we'll just go with consent agenda, because I don't think that-
I agree with the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, nobody had any extractions? Do we have a second? A second, okay, all those in favor? Okay. Todd, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Yes. Doki, okay. So, reports, we have the board goals in your packet, again, last meeting we didn't have a forum, so we need to, the board goals are the only thing we need to approve as a board, the other two documents that you have, we just need any feedback that people have on those, at our last meeting there was no additional feedback, does anybody have anything on board goals?
I think I did.
Okay. Marcia, do you have her number, can you text her and have her call in?
I texted her, so I guess I'll just let her know to call, I know she can.
All right. So you said you thought you had something on board goals?
So we can discuss them, I'll make the motion that we adopt them as presented, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
A second for adopting the board goals, and then we'll discuss what these could change.
No, it's the committee priorities, I had a question though.
Okay, so if there's no other discussion, no other updates, people are okay? All those in favor? Okay, great, okay, so the committee priorities, again, we don't have to approve these, but if we do have updates to these, or things we want to make sure are included in the particular committee so that the chairs are aware, these are things that have kind of been gathered over time, of what we've said we want the committees to do, the only thing that I would add, I was gonna add something to facilities based on the meeting we just had, but I can't remember what that was, so forget about that. Does anybody have any additions, clarifications, changes?
Yeah, I think under facilities, I had suggested we broaden energy savings report, with a broader vision of ensuring and evaluating school performance based on energy, making sure we're saving on all environmental costs possible, looking at health improvements, sort of broader, a broad review, just then that savings report specifically.
Okay, and this savings report was referring to the-
Building pressure.
Right, right, the requirement that we match up, that ESG actually matches up what our savings are, because they owe us money if we're not saving at least what they promised in the building project, so that was a very specific report that we are thinking we might just do once, depending on the results of that, but maybe we need an additional item that's more-
Yeah, or it could be folded into, I mean, I think all of these are very specific items, facilities assessment report, BRS building, many report, capital budget, project estimates, so I guess, you know, one goal I'd love to add is ensuring, improving sustainability cost metrics for energy saving, I can suggest some language if that would be helpful, sort of a broader-
Okay, so adding an item on sustainability and-
Green buildings, standards, something.
Okay. Okay, so we'll add that, was there anything else?
Just a number seven.
That will be a number seven, yep. Okay, again, if, you know, this is really a working list for each committee chair to make sure that these things are incorporated in their committee meetings at the time that it makes sense to do it, you know, obviously finance has a timeframe different than, you know, the other committees, so they have to make sure they do things quickly. And then the meeting topics, oh, did you have something else in this?
Yeah, we had under curriculum.
Yep.
Number three is school-wide enrichment, continued implementation and information to parents, perhaps we could incorporate whatever recommendations from the ad hoc enrichment committee, but not just continuing to implement school-wide enrichment, but considering recommendations from the ad hoc committee.
Okay, and those, we would look at them first in curriculum, you're thinking? Because those are coming to the main board?
No.
Oh.
So the ad hoc will come straight to the main board, you're saying they won't stop and?
It was the intention, it was intention that the charge was to have the ad hoc enrichment committee bring a report to us on October's, last November, but, you know, in time for the budget season, so.
But we can also bring it to curriculum, you know, either before or after, the discussions are different in the subcommittees, you know, because you have a smaller group, but a different group, so if you, if you want us to add a discussion of the ad hoc enrichment committee recommendation-
Well, to the extent the curriculum committee will separately discuss school-wide enrichment implementation, I think it should be informed by the discussion that the ad hoc committees have, and so we could do it in either order, but just make sure everybody's-
Okay, so we'll make sure-
I mean, these are priorities, so thinking about priorities in the broader sense.
Okay, all right. If there was nothing else on committees, then the schedule of meeting topics, and if you look at September, we moved more language to the curriculum, since that's where we had put it last year, but again, these are, we talk about each set of meetings at the meeting prior, so like tonight we'll talk about what we're looking for in the October discussions, just like last month we talked about what are we looking for tonight in our meetings, but we do want to make sure that we put the topics in here so that people can be prepared a month before to say, what is it you're looking for in this discussion, so that people have plenty of time to do that.
Can I make one reflection, one reflective comment from the superintendent on this list?
Yep.
And that is that for a meeting just at six o'clock, I think we'll want to move the FY '20 capital budget proposal from the November meeting to the October meeting, so that needs to move. I would also just observe that tonight, when we're talking about the October presentations, and we talk about a strategic plan update and review, what we would bring to you in October will be more about what we are about to unfold and embark on during the course of the year, because a September meeting, an October 15th meeting, we have to put that presentation together by the week before that, and so with only four or five weeks of the school year having happened, you know, all the work hasn't really sort of unfolded and gotten going, so-
Although, although I would expect to get updates on the summer work, because there was a lot of summer work in the curriculum areas at least.
That is true, that is correct, that is correct, so, so all I say is, you know, the board can at its pleasure keep it where it is, or if you wished to move it to November, you might get a little more, there'd be a little more movement, that's just, that's just a thought, and you know, we've already, we're gonna trade out the capital budget proposal to October, and perhaps there could be other things, such as the curriculum committee overview, you know, where I know each, each committee's having its own opportunity to kind of talk about what they're doing for the year, that could maybe a lot happen in October too, I don't know, so, so, but those are just some thoughts, it should get to that point.
Okay, so let's kind of do one at a time, do you want to move curriculum up to October?
That's curriculum committee overview for October meeting, I think, fine.
Okay, and then do we want to move the strategic plan, so they have a little more time to evaluate, you know, the implementation, that's fine, okay. All right, so we're moving that to November, and we're moving curriculum and FY '20 capital up. Yep, and where is the enrichment thing?
November recommendation review, ad hoc.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Margaret, can I just clarify what you said at the outset of this, that where we see the subject listed, it would be the month prior that it would be live for discussion, and then so-
The month prior, it would be what do you expect in this presentation?
Right.
So in October, you have to say, this is what I expect from the staff and student survey actions items, this is what I want to see in that presentation, so that when we get it, we hopefully are getting what everybody's looking for.
So this list is the actual of where the meeting is held?
Right.
But the month before we'll remind everyone that we talk about the next topic, and so if there's specific items you want to make sure that we address in the presentations, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so again-
Thank you for considering the superintendent's thoughts there, appreciate that.
Well, you're welcome.
And if you're switching things around and you want to move something else to October, the ad hoc sustainability committee, you know, exactly take place in October, and there's a town composting event on October 6th that is designed to inspire kids and their parents both to compost, it could be a nice segue into our conference meeting, but I see we have a lot of shuffling, so.
Well, it's okay, as long as people tonight are prepared to, you know, say, this is, you know, a little bit about what we're, you know, what we're gonna discuss at that, on that topic, which is fine, I mean, I think we've talked about this at the retreat, you know, I think everybody has an idea in their head about what we're gonna, you know, what we're looking for a little bit, so.
Do we need a written charge document to review?
Not for tonight, but we will for October, we'll want to make sure that we have something, because it's just easier to work off of something written than nothing, so for October we'll want to have, you know, a charge, a timeframe, you know, I think, or, and at least an expectation, you know, and maybe our timeframe is longer on this one, because we're not really looking for the FY '20 budget season, well, yes, we still are, okay.
I think that's just creating an ad hoc committee, so I think putting it in October's fine.
Okay, all right, was there anything else in the meeting topics? Okay, and again, this is a little bit, you know, the agenda items, so if something comes up that we haven't anticipated and we need to talk about it, then we'll, you know, we'll funnel it in and make sure we talk about it. All right, so we have got the board goals, PTO updates, I think we have something here, and we're up to you, Bob, superintendent's report.
Okay, great, so we had a very exciting and smooth school opening on August 27th, and incredibly successful, I would say, and I was thinking to myself, I cannot believe that we're now in week four of the school year, so things have just moved along, time moves, and judging by the smiling faces of children and the positive comments from parents and staff, we seem to be off and running. My first superintendent's parent update was sent home on the very first day of school, along with the first day packet of important information. Enrollment and student needs, you'll see the enrollment report for this time, September 17th today, our enrollment continues to run strong, remains fluid, October 1st we take our official count for the year, but as Beecher has typically experienced, our enrollment seems to grow during the course of the year, so we will be watching that carefully. We have many new students, we have many new student needs that were not anticipated, and we're welcoming every single student with every single need, but we are needing to make adjustments, and we have made a lot of adjustments in our teacher assistance schedules in order to maximize their talents and their time and their schedules to support these needs. I want to publicly thank our teaching assistants, who have done a great job of being very flexible with their schedules, and we will continue to monitor this as time goes on, we want to make sure that we have enough staffing to support the needs that have come through our doors, so I will continue to update you if there's any need for changes in that area. A building update, so as everybody knows, from the many emails and notifications that were sent out in August, we took a very aggressive steps to address the conditions of our building in August as a result of the hot, humid, and damp summer, we continue to monitor building temperatures and humidity levels as well, and we've had successful results, we've employed the use of large industrial-sized dehumidifiers, and even though the cleaning has taken place and was done as at the end of August, we've kept those dehumidifiers in place for added success through most of September, they will eventually be leaving the hallways, but we believe that has been a help as well. I do want to thank parents and staff, they've been very appreciative of the swift and comprehensive efforts that were made, so thank you to all of you for that. On the same topic, as you know, there's been a number of special meetings that have been in the same particular topic area of humidity and our HVAC system, a special board of education meeting took place on Tuesday, September 4th, and our ad hoc committee, our ad hoc building committee shared information with all of you, and thank you for your endorsement and nodding the head to the recommendations that they have to bring on, independent engineering company to review our system and make recommendations. So that same presentation they brought to you on September 4th, they brought to the Board of Selectmen meeting last Wednesday, September 12th, the ad hoc building committee presented that, and endorsing the Van Zelm Engineering Company to do this evaluation, as you know, the Board of Selectmen did approve and endorse this process, however, while we have not budgeted this in our particular board that budget, they have asked us to assimilate this into our budget, the evaluation is at a cost of not to exceed around $34,000, and the evaluation has actually started already, it started today, so that's a good thing. We have three very successful open houses, and I'll let Mrs. Prisco talk a little bit about that in a few moments, we've had ad hoc committees running, our class size ad hoc committee will meet for the final time this week, as we anticipate reporting back to the full board on October 15th, that's another thing we need to add to our October 15th agenda, the ad hoc enrichment committee met on August 29th with a presentation by Bonnie O'Regan of the Connecticut Association of the Gifted, good discussion took place, still many questions, our next meeting is scheduled for next Monday at 7:00, right in the comfy section of the library. In the North Office, Lynn Lucas, many of you know her, secretary to the principal, has announced her retirement effective November 1st, Lynn has been an important part of our staff for many years, and we wish her well, and we'll be finding a time to recognize her and thank her for her many years of dedicated service to Beecher Road School. As you know, I've been speaking to you about a policy review done by CAPE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAPE has confirmed that they will initiate a full review of our online policy manual, this whole review will start in October, will take a few months to complete, and once complete, our policies subcommittee will really have really defined direction as to where we should be spending our time as a priority to update the add or delete policies. We also had a great ice cream social, which I'll let our administrative team talk a little bit about, but again, a wonderful evening and a wonderful opportunity for the Beecher Road School community to come together, to start the school year and to get us going in a very positive way. And finally, just a reminder, there's no school this coming Wednesday, September 19th, in servants of Yom Kippur. That concludes my report, and hopefully it can kind of feed right into our president's report as well, if that's okay with the chair.
Thank you, everyone, so I will follow up, just like Bob, I can't believe we're four weeks into school already, and so, just a few pieces of information, we started our year off this year with a community building activity, which was our school-wide walk, and again, we ended the year with that on our field day, and we felt it would be great to initiate that to start off the school year, we thank our PE and health department for organizing that, and all of the teachers for supporting that as well, so, second community event would be the ice cream social, probably next to the Halloween Hoot, one, if not the biggest event that we have in town, where there are so many families here, we thank all the volunteers that are here scooping ice cream and just engaging and socializing, getting to know new families, you know, and visiting some old friends, so, again, the PTO, many events across the school year, but this one is our kickoff, and it's been a great tradition, and the weather never fails us, now that I've said that. So as Bob said, we have had three open houses, and they were very, very well attended, we added something to our open house this year, each of our specialists, as you know, the open houses are dedicated to a particular grade, and each specialist who is not a classroom teacher attends at least one of them, but you as a parent may not see the art teacher at the particular, an art teacher at the particular night that you are attending, so one of our members of our technology team, Jeannie Charley, we, after I asked her a huge favor in the very beginning of school, and said, can you go around and get photos of all of the support staff that are not classroom teachers, so be it a school psychologist, a nurse, a custodian, someone who works in the North Office, and so that was playing for folks, for parents to put a face to a name, just so that, and we played it at each one, and it is still playing on our monitors outside the cafeteria and outside of the North Office, so again, just a way for you to become familiar with someone who you may not see or be introduced to at one of the open houses. In our increased efforts to improve our communication to parents, as you may have already heard, we have transitioned from our instant alert system to the Swift K-12 system, we tested it out a bit with our open house, I asked, so my very scientific data of a show of hands, I asked how many people received the message, we specifically sent to the members attending those particular open houses, a message reminding K through two, three, four, and mag individually, and most hands went in the air, so people are getting those, those are the green, non-emergent, non-weather-related messages, so most folks are getting those, but we still have about 100 students who have not updated their information, so when we think 840 some odd students, and we still, we have about 100, when you think of it that way, that's a great percentage, but it's still 100, so if you are a person who's either struggling with it, or, you know, the technology's not working for you, please call us in the North Office, we can help walk you through that, or if you just haven't had time to do it, if you can kind of do that and get that up and going, please do so, it's really, really helpful for us to have that updated demographic information. Lisa and I, the two administrators, met with our sixth graders, as we do each year, they have an important job, we have a community meeting, a little different than we have typically done it, where we visited each classroom, this year we had a community needed, they have an important job here as sixth graders, many of them have been here, this will be their seventh year, some of them eight, they've been in pre-K, and we talked to them about their role as a leader in the school, and what that means, and there's no better way to represent that than what we recently just had with our peaceful bus initiative, and the role fifth and sixth graders played in that, do you want to come in and share before I finish?
Hi, everybody, so our peaceful bus initiative actually came out of our safe school climate plan, our safe school climate committee and our safe school climate plan, and basically it's been several years in the making, but it was an opportunity for all of our bus drivers to come together, we had designated teacher mentors for every single bus, we actually roped our fifth and sixth graders into being leaders, our sixth graders went and collected kindergarten students and brought them to a designated area, our fifth graders went and collected first grade students and brought them to a designated area, it warmed all of our hearts, I saw one girl counting the students that she had with her to make sure she had them, and I said, that's what teachers do all the time, good job, honey.
And one of our students had them in a circle, and he had them all holding hands and walking so that he did not lose any, and there were fifth graders in the front of the line, and in the back of the line, and one in the middle.
Oh my God, it was great, it was fantastic, but it was an opportunity, basically, for the bus, the bus community to come together, and they actually ran a responsive classroom type activity, where they started with a greeting, they had a little conversation about what was expected on the bus, together as a community, as a bus community, they talked about the roles of everyone on the bus, and everyone associated with the bus, and then they actually ended up creating bus expectations, and all sort of agreeing to abide by those bus expectations, so it was a really lovely opportunity for another type of community to come together within the larger Beecher Road School community. Did I miss anything?
No, thanks. Thank you. So, another event, events for us, safety and security, we have our drills that we do monthly, we've already had our practice fire drill without the alarm, and the next day with the alarm, and another event today, so we're good with fire drills for this month, but we will continue our monthly drills, you know, we have our lockdown and our bus evacuation and bus safety, so these will continue each month, and we will announce those to our staff so they know what to expect, and the reason for announcing the different types of drills is we feel we have a very strong and comprehensive plan, but if we know that it's happening, then we try to do it to perfection following the plan, that's where we look for the holes in our plan, not a human error, or someone forgot something, that's where we look to make sure that our process is right, so we do announce those drills, and we will continue to do so. A little curriculum news, so I had opportunity to be visiting multiple classrooms today, and was in writing workshop in both first grade and second grade, and watching our first graders write about a small moment for them, and so it's something that's real, something that's happened, and how, and class one, you know, they develop a class one, and then they go off and work on that on their own, and in our second grade, some realistic writing for them, an actual event that happened, and they drafted some, brainstormed some ideas of actual things that happened, and then they listed those ideas, and the teacher modeled what the beginning of the story would look like, the middle, when I walked in, the children were independently working, and brought them all back to the carpet, and showed this was our class model, and then they were sharing some of their own work and what they were doing today, so, again, getting those first six weeks of school, responsive classroom, getting those routines and structures of the day in place, and like I said, it happened to be second grade, check your knees, check your nose, so knees and nose to the front where they are speaking, and that's just a way that a strategy teacher uses without having to say, Mr. Polo, please make sure you're turned around to the front, not picking them out, sorry, but just a simple strategy that they use, I was also in fifth grade today, it is Constitution Day, and students having conversations about what their rights are, how laws are passed, and how come not anyone can just go pass a law, and what the process is for that, and, you know, students have all the questions, but it was just a little insight for them, so that's my update tonight, unless there's any questions.
Any questions, Priscilla?
Thank you.
Marcia, comments?
Oh, yeah. I've heard very positive things about the peaceful bus initiative in the community, from parents, from kids, and from the bus drivers, so it was really nice, and one parent said, my child never takes the bus, and was really happy that the child had the opportunity to see the bus driver, that if there was the need to evacuate the building, the child had had some interaction with the bus driver, so kudos, well done.
Thank you, and we will continue, they'll need it a few more times this year.
Okay, we should have mentioned, I should have mentioned, I- We should have mentioned, I should have mentioned, I apologize for not, that Peter Halsey, who is a member of our Safe School Climate Committee and our responsive classroom nationally-trained teacher, was the one who really took the lead and really helped to organize this. He worked very, very hard to make this happen. He had support, of course, but it was really spearheaded by Peter Halsey. So I just want to mention that.
Just to the sheer organization of moving 840 students, they walked in the building, and by 8:45, as they were being called and announced, and had them all transitioned into their 14 different meeting locations for the 14 different buses and all of the adult shifting, it was awesome. It really was, so kudos.
Great. Okay. I think we are up to the open choice discussion, and everybody has information in their packet. We have this as a topic twice a year. The topic at this point is to see if there's anything that we're thinking about regarding this topic that would impact the budget. So when we talk about it, and whatever discussion takes place, what we're trying to get to in the end is, is there any potential impact to the budget that we need to make sure that we're addressing, you know, now for next year's budget? You know, obviously, we're working towards FY20's budget. So, Bob, I don't know if you wanted to briefly go through this?
Sure. So I do want to say that, thank you very much for your suggestions as to what data would be helpful. So we've incorporated, I believe, everything that was requested, that we could, our hands-on, everything from our philosophy of how we look at open choice. We want it to be a full, the full experience, not just coming in at a fourth or fifth grade, but, you know, the whole Beecher Road experience from the early-on kindergarten, what our guidelines are for class sizes, what's the, you know, what's our room situation? We know we're talking about enrolling enrollment, and, you know, how big can we get here? What is the state funding that we have? So I'm not going to go through all these, you know, word by word, but I think you can, these help, you know, and as you look at the state funding, just, you know, we're a little under 2% right now of our total population, so we're getting a $3,000 per student. Somebody asked just, you know, a comparison, we were talking a lot about, you know, what's our comparison of, you know, demographics and enrollment, as well as, you know, even just the profile of free and reduced from five years ago, 2012, to last year, 2017? Last year is the, 2017, October is the last quantifiable year we can really get stats on. So we have that information for free and reduced. If you turn the page, also, you know, the question of, you know, so what are other neighboring districts doing with open choice? How many students they enroll? What's their percentage in their district of open choice students? And so you'll see the area districts, and, you know, Beecher Road is right there, listed at the bottom, we are at 1.81%. That was of the most recent year's quantifiable numbers. Again, it's not this year's. And you'll see that 1.81 is right up there, it's the second highest of all the area towns. Only Branford is a little bit higher than us, just creeping over 2%. So we are taking per capita a fair number of students, a large number of students, as you compare it to the neighboring districts.
And this is a list of all of the districts in our ACES group.
ACES group, right?
Right. Right, which is where the open choice is, where the ACES administers the open choice program.
Right.
So that's where this comes from, and it comes directly from Lynn Bailey at the district of ACES.
Lynn Bailey, yep, yep.
At ACES. And I believe it's 1617 data, because if you look at Beecher, 774, I think it looks...
It is 1617, yes.
Okay, yeah. So if, all of the data that we look at, if we're trying to compare schools, the most recent statistics are 1617 usually, so...
And the last two pages are just simply that as well. They're basically the 2012, you look up in the top right corner, October 2017 is one of them, and the other one is October 2012, and it's just basically the percentage of students and the numbers of students in each racial area that the state dictates as we collect data. So you can see 2012, along the bottom is the overall numbers, you know, so you'll see the numbers in 2012, and then if you want to compare them to 2017, you know, there are some, there's some minor, you know, some changes here and there, not a lot, but that's where the data, that's how the data falls out. So...
Okay, so I don't know if anybody had anything they wanted to bring up, and like I said, especially anything that we think might, you know, look towards an impact to the budget, so...
Sure, I'll start a discussion. I definitely am in favor of increasing our open, our utilization of the open choice program. I know the board has had discussions about this. I wasn't on the board last October when we discussed it, and voted on it, so I apologize for being repetitive, but I do think diversity benefits. Every single member of this community prepares students for a real work environment, enhances learning and differing perspectives. There's a whole host of benefits for our students to increase the diversity at Connecticut at Beecher. I know that, I see from these trends that we have been increasing diverse student body representation, which is great. I think we've got a long way to go to be reflective of most communities across the country. So I just encourage us to consider increasing it for the benefit of the students, and also because it's good public policy, Connecticut's a segregated state, and there are opportunity gaps, depending on what districts are available to you. So, and then I think the final reason to consider increasing is there are economic benefits. My quick reading of the legislation around open choice is that if we increase to 3% total enrollment, we'd get $6,000 per student instead of the current $3,000 per student we're getting. You can correct me if that's an inaccurate reading, but to me, that's a huge incentive. We're at 1.8% to go another 1.2% to double the amount of funding available from the state seems like a strong enough reason on its own.
So I've made my point, everyone. I don't know what to say, but we should leave it alone, by several reasons. We are in a situation where, if you look at our BRS enrollment profile, we have focused a lot of attention on keeping class sizes in a reasonable range. And we are now, if you look at our enrollment, we are at the max of all of our classes. So all of our classes in K-1, 2 are essentially 18 to 19, and our policy states it should be 17 to 19. In grades 4 through 6, our policy says we should be 19 to 21, and we are 21 and higher in every single class, in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. While, yes, there's a financial benefit, our cost per pupil is $17,000 to $18,000, and while we might get a few thousand dollars per kid that comes in, it certainly doesn't cover the cost of adding classrooms. If we were at the lower end of all of these strategic, you know, of these classroom sizes, if we were at 16 everywhere, and we had capacity in all the current classrooms, the ability to add students and then get money, which doesn't really cost us additional dollars, but we're already talking about possibly having to do with, wait, with, like, classrooms for languages, because we don't have capacity in the building for any more classroom for teachers. So if we increase even a few percentage points, we're going to be adding a classroom guaranteed. Even if we added four kids, we're going to have to add classrooms. If you look at our school population over the last five years, we have increased by somewhere on the order of 20 to 30 kids each year for the last three or five years. We are not a shrinking school. We are a growing school. And if we do what we did last two years in a row, we easily have to add one to two classrooms. And honestly, adding open choice students, it's not about, to me, it's not about whether it's good policy or not. For our students who enrolled in here, and our taxpayers who are paying for this education, it's an added expense that, and an added, honestly, classroom size increase that I'm not willing to do. People moved to Woodbridge because our classroom sizes are significantly smaller than other towns, and that has been a policy that this board has enacted, has kept, has reenacted multiple times in the nine, this is my 10th year on the Board of Ed, and classroom size is something that comes up as a number-one priority for teachers when we do teacher contract negotiations. So honestly, I mean, I would love to hear from the teachers, and Lynn is one, but I would love to hear, because, again, if, every negotiation I've been around the table, teachers want classroom sizes to be small, and adding classroom size doesn't work, and I don't see where we have capacity to add kids, and doing it for a couple of thousand dollars, I know it's getting money, but when we think about what it costs to bring one extra teacher into this class, it's probably, you can tell me I'm wrong, but it's probably around $100,000 between teacher salary, benefits, health insurance, all that stuff. So one extra classroom is $100,000. If we got 14 kids and we're getting paid $6,000 per kid, it doesn't even cover the cost of one classroom. So, again, I appreciate the intent, but I think our school is one of the few schools in the area that has, I mean, when I started on this Board of Ed, we were, by 2018, predicted to be down at 480 kids, and we're at 840 kids. The demographics were wrong, we are at a growing capacity. I don't see how we can be good stewards of the finances of our town residents and increase classroom sizes and cost to the town. That's my...
Yeah, I'd echo many of the things that you just said. One of the things that concerns, well, first of all, I think we should think about that we have an ad hoc class size committee right now, that's looking at class size, and the recommendation, I think that's going to come out of that committee, is that that class sizes be left as, the guidelines be left as they currently are. Looking at the enrollment information that we have tonight, I already see that the potential for us adding a sixth-grade teacher next year. I mean, if you look at the numbers in the, in the fifth grade, I don't, I don't see how we can't add a sixth grade, and I don't see a spot where we could move somebody. So I already see the potential for us having an additional sixth-grade teacher next year. I'm concerned about the space in the building, I'm concerned about raising that class size because I listened to the teachers that came to the class size ad hoc committee, and they were pretty clear about their feelings about keeping the class size as it was. And we are, as you pointed out, at the max. So as a, as a former teacher, I think that class size is important, and I think that we, we have to look at those numbers when we make decisions, so... Todd?
I've got a couple of questions, and then I think a comment or two as well. I think when we look at the financials, I think, Steve, you had said $16,000 or $17,000, $16,000 to $17,000 per student? Is that based off of the overall operating budget for the school divided by the enrollment?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's the overall, if you add one, it's not going to change the numbers that much. Plus, I think that, look, I'm thinking about the state funding, when you go above 2%, you get $4,000 per student, so you need to add those dollars onto the currently enrolled students as well. Just quick calculations on that front, if we were based off of the numbers that are here, which I guess are from 1617, if we went above 2% for Beecher Road, based on the 774 enrollment, we'd be adding two students, which would bring the annual state funding to $64,000. That would be a 20, what, that would be a $22,000 increase from the previous year. If you were to jump to 3%, you'd be having to add 10 students based on these numbers, which would bring the total state dollars to $144,000. I don't think it is just a financial discussion that we should be having, I think it is about the diversity, the class size, et cetera. And this is all really new information for me, so I apologize. But I think we're staring down adding classrooms no matter what. And so I think that if we have a purpose to improve some diversity, there are financial gains to be made there as well, that it should be considered. I think we're going to, again, looking at the BRS enrollment overall, I think that we're looking at class size, class additions, whether we support this or don't support this. So some of those arguments, I think, should be, you know, balanced by the importance of diversity and some of the financial gains that we'd be making as well.
So just, just based on our enrollment figures, what we use, what we use, like, going forward is the October numbers. So we're talking, you know, based on last year and projections, and you said we added four kids, you know, this week. We're closer to adding, we had to add three kids to get to 2%, and 12 kids to get to 3%. So, you know, just, and then we'd be at 17 times a higher amount, and then we'd be at, you know...
Right, 26 kids or so.
Yeah, so, so we do, again, this all assumes that the state continues to fund this program and fund it at the levels that it has in the past. I'm, I'm not convinced, based on activity from last year and the year before, that we can count on, the reality is the state has changed, you know, what they've promised to us multiple times, lowered, you know, never raised, you know, in terms of education cost share and other things, where we budgeted for a certain amount with a certain expectation. So I'm a little leery of the state in terms of those dollars, but, but you're, you know, and I get what you're saying in terms of financial issues, and what Steve's saying is, you know, this is what we report as our cost per student. Obviously, if you add one, it doesn't cost you that, but if you add one class, it costs you $100,000, not $17,000. So it's, it's all a little bit of, where's the tipping point, a little bit, so...
And I guess what I was trying to make was, I need to draw, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Was that I think we're already, in terms of the classroom numbers that we need, what I see here is we're already at a tipping point prior to this. I think that's a different discussion.
Right, and I think that, again, is, when Steve brought up the capacity, right now, what we, what we kind of say is, we don't have any empty classrooms. So if we have to add a classroom, it means we'll take away one of our classrooms that can be managed, not as well, you know, we don't, we think that it takes away something from the program, but even adding one classroom, based on current statistics, without any additional, anything added, we would be taking away a classroom. We already, we've already taken away a health classroom, and we no longer have that as, you know, that's, you know, they go into the class.
On the card.
Right, they go into the class, we have the curriculum. I'm not in any way saying we've decreased our effectiveness in the program, but, you know, what we'd be looking at next, we feel a little bit like it would decrease the effectiveness of the program if you don't have a room that's covered in, you know, or is in another language, citizen, whatever. So, I'm sorry, did you have, you had something as well?
Oh, just to feed into what you were talking about, the two additional classrooms without significantly impacting program curriculum delivery, what are those?
We've identified, and reluctantly, we've identified world language would be the programs that would unfortunately have to be like health.
So it would be mobile going around?
Right, so then the teachers would go into the classroom to do world language, as opposed to the students coming into a world language classroom. And I taught when world language was on a card. It's a very different delivery of instruction. As a teacher, I see a huge difference in having the kids be able to go into a room where kids are immersed in the language than for the world language teacher to come into the classroom.
The visuals get very much limited, you know...
Very limited, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know...
And teacher preparation is different, and so, you know, I see that as a huge impact. I know that others see it as a more minimal impact, and certainly it is in comparison to some other classroom spaces, but there is, there is an impact to the curriculum, so...
I know I'm going to get evil glares for this, but I think maybe the question might be, on a broader term, what, what do we need to do to start advocating for more classroom space?
If you looked at the agenda, that we said, what are our committee, that's one of the committee things, is what's our plan for space? Should we, and we have scenarios of adding one classroom, adding two classrooms, adding three classrooms, because honestly, we added a kindergarten, three years ago, we added a kindergarten room on August 28th.
Labor Day weekend, it was on...
Yeah, Labor Day weekend, we posted, hired a kindergarten teacher, and set up a kindergarten room, basically, two days before the kids started. And again, to me, this is my concern, is that every summer, we end the year thinking we're at a certain number, and by the time the school year starts, the number of enrollments, and throughout the year, we get, you know, another 20 kids, which is amazing to me.
The other thing, I'm sorry, the other thing that, you know, I think we need to look at is, we're... look at is we're, you know, 71% white, which means we're close to 30% not. The state's 54% white. So, you know, when we look at the diversity we have, you know, we're, you know, again, we'd have to look at, at everybody else. When we look at, you know, how are we doing with open choice in terms of other districts? Not that other districts affect what we decide, but, you know, we're, we're higher than everybody else in ACES except Branford. And I'm not completely sure what the deal is in Branford. I don't know if they have like a, and, and some of this is affected by MAGA schools and other things, you know, when you're looking at the numbers. So I guess what, what we need to decide is, are we looking to make a budget impact? And when I say that, I don't mean the additional dollars. So if we're getting an additional $42,000 because we've increased to 2%, we're not, we're not calling that a decrease because it's $17,000 a student, we're not, we're not saying that, because, you know, three additional kids is a very different discussion than 12 additional kids, because that's a classroom. There's no way to divide 12 kids across the kindergarten classrooms. And again, the philosophy of the school is the best experience for our kids and for the kids coming in is when they come in in kindergarten, because then we're not bringing kids in in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, who came from a different curriculum, who came from, and, and when we have to do that, of course, we do that. When kids come into the district, of course, we accommodate whatever age they come in, but ideally, we would start all of these children that we're talking about in kindergarten, which is what, what we do now.
So just to clarify, our current plan is we will continue with 14 open choice slots, which means that each year, two slots will open up in kindergarten. Is that kind of where it is right now or what's the?
No, that, that's actually not true.
Well, so we have 14 slots right now. It's, it's not necessarily equally distributed between every single grade level, just based upon the history.
Okay, right, so depending on who exits.
Right, so for instance, right now, we have no sixth graders, according to my chart, unless I'm one year off. We have no, we have, we have no sixth grade students in the program. So technically, we wouldn't actually not be bringing in any kindergartners next year because we have 14 students in the building, those same 14 students, unless, let's say a student moved out of state or something like that, those same 14 will be here next year.
So we don't necessarily add children.
Not every, not every year, right.
Depending on who leaves. Some years we do, but.
But we maintain the 14 slots open and however that.
That's, that's what we do currently and this discussion is to, to say, what is, what is our plan for next year? And when we actually get to the spring is when we identify the actual number and give it to ACES and say, you know, this is the number of students that we're adding or, you know, we're not, depending on what we're doing. So what we're trying to decide tonight is what do we see as what we want to do and can do and, and what impact will it have on the budget so that we consider that when we're considering all the other things that we need to consider in, you know, what do we pay for next year? So that's, that's a discussion. So I don't know where we need to go next.
One thing I would just also say, maybe interesting for some of you based upon the, maybe interesting to record this moment in time, you know, we see a class, you know, class sizes is something that's important to note. When you're talking about this in January or February, whenever that deadline comes, take a look at how the, how the classes have evolved over four months or so. Nothing may have happened or something may have happened. It just, it just provides a little window into how Beecher Road School sometimes evolves during the course of school year. It's just one component, one data point of the different things that we've been weighing. So we just mentioned that as well.
And the other thing that's always difficult is we don't really have any good numbers on projections for kindergarten. We've never had accurate information, you know, we get information from the demographers, but it's never like we say, oh, you know, we're going to have, you know, 18 kids per class or 17 next year because that's the number of, you know, four-year-olds hanging out. It, it never works. So our projections for kindergarten are, are always unknown. But, you know, we have the past and we can look at, you know, how things have looked in the past in the spring and then in the fall.
I have a question. I, I understand the priority to place everyone initially in kindergarten. Are there deviations from that? Would we have the opportunity to say, well, we have more space in our first grade, for example, because we see lower enrollment numbers in first grade, you know, and open up a slot in first grade?
So, I'll go ahead.
Do you want to, I got an in or a reverse?
Yeah, so historically, what we've done is we've added in kindergarten.
I understand that.
And then we've, we've allowed siblings. So for example, if there's an incoming kindergartner and they have a sibling, you know, we've allowed them to come in in whatever grade they are, even, you know, I think we've even exceeded our 14 if we're allowing a sibling in. But we, we have not put, placed children in other than kindergarten from a philosophical perspective, I think.
But there's no criteria from ACES that says they have to be incoming in kindergarten?
No, no.
I think the, the reason that we have not brought in kids at higher levels is that we do have different resources, different curriculum. We're not fully aligned with the school districts that these children are coming from. And putting a kid into a foreign school where some of the kids have had four years of Spanish and this child might have never taken Spanish because they don't offer it in some of the school districts locally. I think it puts a kid who's in a new skill and uncomfortable, in an uncomfortable position that they're already getting pulled out to bring up, them up to speed. And so that's, that's why we haven't done it before, because a lot of the things that we offer are just not offered in some of the other school districts, specifically in behavior where most of these kids come from. And so I don't know if, if you guys want to speak to that aspect of curriculum.
And it's the social component also for a student to begin school and then spend seven years with their peers. You know, we know when students move into the district, we do our best to make sure that they are welcomed and make sure that they make connections. But as a practice, if you begin with your kindergarten peers and, and work all the way up, you know the components or the, the way that Beecher does things and it just makes for a more comfortable environment.
I guess I'd respond to that with saying, I, I understand that's the ideal circumstance, but we should consider being more flexible in order to, to, you know, adjust our enrollment needs with the desire to increase our diversity. Kids move schools all the time for other reasons, they start their languages. It's, I don't think that should be inclusive of us thinking outside the box in those terms. And I do understand the fiscal constraints. I certainly, you know, want to be a good steward to our school and, you know, class size is challenging, but it does seem like there is both tipping points in some places and flexibility in others. So to use these, you know, potentially, you know, even if we were to consider the 2%, you know, three additional kids as a tipping point, I'm afraid that's putting this, you know, putting, putting open choice is a, it's a false choice. We're choosing between adding a new class and, you know, increasing open choice enrollment. We don't know that's how it's going to play out.
Yeah, and I don't.
So I would consider, I would just, I guess I'd urge the board to consider at a minimum going to that 2% level, which is only, you know, two to three kids, depending on the calculation, would have the, the benefit of the increased financial contribution from the state and could put us at, you know, at least in the, the middle criteria of the, what the statute contemplated. So that would be my request for the board to consider.
Okay, so I think for us to consider it, we'll put it in terms of a motion. So you are making a motion that we increase our open choice enrollment to 2% of our population, which right now looks like two to three kids. I mean, it depends, like we're at 840 right now, but I think we include out of district in our.
2.8 children.
What?
It's 2.8.
2.8, okay, all right. Thank you, Steve, that certainly helps.
Thank you.
So, so is that your motion?
Is that a motion? I mean, I'm, I'm also happy to make, yeah, I think that's, that's the motion that makes the most sense in the context of these discussions from what I hear. It's very unlikely that we'd get support of over 3%. So.
So I have, I have, I do have a question. I want to make sure I'm clear on something here. So it was not my understanding, it's not we were making a motion that, that we would, this was, this was an opportunity at once out of two times a year to take a look at and without having to do it just once a year, that we were simply looking at the data, having a conversation, being able to keep this conversation live, be ready to make a decision in January when we actually do have to determine. So I'm not, I'm, I won't tell the board what to do, but I, wasn't my, wasn't my understanding that we're actually taking a motion tonight to increase, decrease, keep the same? Is that, or is that, does the board want to do that?
Yeah, my concern is, is that we don't, if, if what we're trying to do is say, what are we going to, what are we going to do to impact the budget? I think that, that Claire's comment, that adding 2.8 children is not going to have a budget impact. It is not going to tip us into a new kindergarten class, an additional kindergarten class. Now, you know, if next year, the enrollment is, you know, at, you know, 20 in each class, you know, or, or, you know, whatever, I mean, I'm not saying it's, it's impossible to have it tip, but it's unlikely to be a budget impact. So in that sense, the, the motion that we would need to make tonight, to me, is anything that would be a budget impact if what we want to do is, is say, well, that's, that was my thinking, that we just want to make clear what our intention is because we have to address the impact on the budget. And I'm sort of, did you have something to say? Claire, did you have something? So I don't know, I don't know if anybody else was thinking of a motion. I, I understand what you're saying is that the actual decision about, you know, openings we can make in the spring, we can hold the motion with the understanding that our intention is, you know, not to create a budget impact, you know, and again, you know, that, that 2% would be where we'd be looking or, or we can go ahead and make, you know, consider the motion. So actually, a motion's been proposed?
I.
Or not?
My understanding was we were, we were flagging areas in the, right, in the budget where there could be an impact. So it seemed appropriate this evening to indicate if, not that we're voting against any budget impacts, but to indicate the like, you know, an area where there could potentially be a budget impact and.
Right, so if we were saying.
Open choice enrollment raising, you know, anywhere from the 2% to 3% would create a budget impact, so we should approve the placeholder for that potential budget impact, I guess is.
So, so I don't see 2% as a budget impact. I do see 3% as a budget impact and anything higher. You know, adding two to three kids, I don't, and again, you know, it's a guess because we have no idea what our kindergarten figure is going to look like next year, but again, based on experience and everything else, I don't think saying that we would have two to three additional children would be a budget impact. So we either have the choice to say, that's something we're going to discuss again and we're not looking to have a budget impact in our spring decision or our January decision on open choice, you know, because we don't want to, to have an impact after budgets, but, you know, going to the town. So we don't, we don't have to make a motion tonight to agree to anything. We can just say that we don't see an open choice change that the board is looking for as a budget impact. And then we have to stick to that, you know, we can't, we can't in January say we're going to 3% because we know that is a budget impact because it's 12 more kids and we, that's looking, you know, not a, not full class, but it's getting close.
Whether we want to do a motion, I don't know, it matters. We're just saying it's aspirational to be at 3%. That's kind of what we need to agree. So I'm not sure, I'm fine with putting that forward as a motion just since where our goal is in upcoming budget year.
Okay, so.
So I'll say.
Okay, and you're comfortable with the motion?
Um.
You made, you made the motion, you kind of have to be comfortable with it. Or, or did you want to change it? Or you don't think we need one? I'm trying to.
No, I, I mean, I.
Move on.
I guess I'm torn between making it at 2% and that, or making it at 3%. I mean, I, I support a 3% even if there is a fiscal adjustment, but I was reading the temperature in the room at what, you know, what, where the board seems to be and thought 2% was a good compromise. But if we're only making a tentative decision, I don't, I, I guess I'm hesitant to restrict our ability to, to look at this again in six months if, if we're just sort of earmarking this as something to revisit.
The issue is, is that in six months, we've already had the budget submitted and it's done. So in six months, the ability to say we're going to go to 3% is, is not as feasible because we have already gone to the town with the budget. It's over, you know, like we can't.
And we've made other choices about where we're spending the money.
So.
That was my initial understanding, but sorry, Bob, your comments confused me by.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nice job.
No problem. That was a freebie.
But, you know, we, we visit this every six months, so.
Can, I'm going to ask a very, what, what level of diversity are we looking for, right? So we're saying we want to increase open choice, because honestly, to me, two kids doesn't make much of a, to me, a diverse impact on the educational system at Beecher when we had 840 kids. So I'm happy, but what's our aspiration? Because I'd love to know, like, are we trying to be 50% Caucasian and like, what, what level of diversity are we looking for? What would be, I'm just curious, I, I don't, I'm not asking it any other way than to say we keep saying we want to increase diversity. We have 29% non-white students in the school, so I'm trying to understand what is our goal? What's our goal? What, what would, what, what's the answer to say? Where do we want to get to? Because that would help me understand over the next five years, we're going to have to spend X amount of dollars to get us there, but I don't think that we should have this discussion about adding 25 or 50 kids a year if that's not really what we're looking for. If we're looking to get to X percent, I think we should focus on.
So to me, I, I don't, the question's relevant because we don't, to me, the question should be what tools in the toolbox are we using to increase our diversity as much as possible? We can't create the, you know, the profile that 50%, 60%, whatever it is that we want as a board of education, but we can evaluate whether we want to use all the tools available to us to increase diverse representation of the student body. And when I look at the open choice program, that to me is, is the tool that we have to embrace to increase diversity.
Right, so I'm just, but we've had discussions where someone said we should be at 6%. I, I just don't know where these numbers come from and I'm trying to, you know, in my head, I'm just thinking about, again, I look at it from this standpoint of how big can we let the school get to? And honestly, there are people in this town who have been here when Beecher had 1,000 kids. We had portable classrooms. It was a not, it wasn't a great teaching environment. So again, if, if our aspiration is to continue to increase open choice in a setting of us going from 600 students to 840 students in the last three to four years, I'm, five years, I don't remember what it was, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand what the goal is because I, I just think we just need to plan. It's not just one year saying we're going to do, let's do 3% next year and add 25 kids, but then what happens to Beecher in two years from now? When do we turn around and turn to open choice and say, sorry, you're all out because we can't even house the kids that live in Woodbridge? Like I, I just want to, I'm not, I'm just asking the question because I, I'm thinking of it more of, okay, over the next three to five years, I've been on the board for 10 years, so I'm not going to be on the board for another 10, so this will all be your issue. This is not a chance. But I, I honestly, I mean, I love the school and my kids, I've been in the school for 15 years straight. I've been here, you know, with kids in the school and I love it and it has changed and it went smaller and it was great and now it's gotten bigger and it is harder to handle this number of kids, forgetting where they're coming from, just 840 kids in a single K6 with a principal, assistant principal, and special, I mean, we're like, we're bigger than any elementary school in the state of Connecticut by far, correct? Is there any other school that has 840 kids?
We haven't done a study, but we're right up there, if not the highest.
I mean, I, because we talked about this when we split from, when we were at 600 and we said we got to split into, you know, we, we were two different schools and we said we got to become one. These are all things, I just, I just worry about, you know, where we're headed and how we're going to, you know, if we say that our goal is 2% and next year we're at 900 kids and now we have to take eight, you know, it's a percent. I, I just. I, I just, I don't want to have this discussion every year and every year have the same. Like, I just, I just want to know in some ways, like, what is the right number? Is 70% not diverse? Is 40% diverse? Is, what's the number? And I don't know that there is a number. I'm just trying to understand what, what our goal is. Because we're, we're never going to look like every town, but I can tell you in Trumbull, it's 75% Caucasian, 25% non-white. You know, Trumbull's a similar dirt to us. It's, you know, it's, you know, one of our peer groups. When you look at our peer groups, we're not far off. So I'm happy to be a, you know, to try to get somewhere, but I just don't know where we're going.
I mean, yeah, I think as a public school, we're also clearly defined by the town in which we are serving. And so, you know, there's not a whole lot that we're going to do with a program like open choice that's going to, that's going to significantly change our diversity numbers. That being said, I do agree with Claire on the notion of, you know, what we have in the toolbox to change some things. We can't, we can't, you know, make a certain type of person purchase a home in Woodbridge. And I also think, you know, looking at this, we have diversity not just in, the diversity in socioeconomics and geography and race and ethnicity as well is, is helpful. Steve, I think your question is, is really important at a larger level as well of this, of the town of Woodbridge. Because I don't think that the, the school itself is really going to be able to, unless there's some, you know, significantly different programs to bring different students, or varied students here. It's, that, that's a, I think, really a broad, a big, broad question. What does the town of Woodbridge aspire to be in terms of its constituents? So I, other than, I just have, you know, that's my comment. I think it's a, it's an important question. It probably goes well beyond the board, but, yeah.
I agree with that. And I, and I, and I also agree that it makes sense to plan strategically and not just have a, a conversation once or twice a year. You know, maybe that's something we can incorporate into our planning and, and our strategic goals. And if, if we were amenable to doing that, you know, I'd feel more comfortable saying, you know, this year, let's go to meet the 2% goal at a minimum. And also talk about how we can do some better planning for our, our diversity goals going forward. So that, I added a part to my motion, I guess.
Well, I think, I think, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out. So, so the open choice program has its limitations. The maximum is 6%. You can't take more than 6% of your population in an open choice student enrollment. So, so again, the question of where are we trying to go? You know, if we go from 2% to 6%, that's, you know, that, that has huge impacts in terms of classroom size, budget, capacity.
We don't have a building anymore.
Right, right.
At 6%, that's three classrooms of kids.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying, it still doesn't get us, it still only gets us to...
We're moving into the library.
65%, you know, potentially. Yeah, I mean, there's no guarantee that the ethnicity of any open choice child is not Caucasian. You know, so we, you know, and again, you know, nobody's trying to say, you know, that anybody's, you know, picking kids or anything. So if the tool that we're looking at is open choice, then I think it's, it's even more of a consideration, what's the goal? Because the most we can do with open choice is a certain percentage. The most we can do, assuming every kid who comes into the program is ethnically diverse. So where does that get us then? And then, and then what's our goal? To encourage, you know, homeownership, to encourage, you know, inclusion, you know, how do, like, as a school, that's, you know, what Todd said, that's, that's really a town.
That zoning and all kinds of issues that we don't, we don't have...
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
And I, I do think having some sort of, I'm happy to have some larger discussion because I think that the community needs to have a say in this. Because there are a lot of people who move here because they were in a town that had 26 kids in that kindergarten class, and they want 17 to 19. And, you know, that's why they came. All right, I can tell you, that's why I moved here from Handed, was because we valued public education. I didn't want to send my kid to private school, and I found Beecher to be a great school, and we moved to Woodbridge. And that's why a lot of people move here. That's why our school compared to schools in all the surrounding towns, which you're seeing, declining enrollment. Our enrollment is up by leaps and bounds, which is a testament, I think, to the job that our teachers do in this school and our administrators. And so we're, we're talking about, you know, what's going to happen with the building and...
And that was my question sort of earlier, was literally, you know, how, how does a Board of Education advocate for either new facilities or legitimate addition to the facility so we don't have our, you know, so that our choices aren't making traveling classrooms for subjects such as Spanish or health or other things?
Well, having just done the building project, I will tell you that we, you know, early in the process, there was a discussion about a new, more modern building that was quickly wiped off the table to, you know, the cost. And so after spending $15 million on some building upgrades, I think it'd be hard pressed to go back to the town and say, we need to add on to the building to accommodate, you know, growth. But I, you know, we may have to at some point. Question is how soon? And again, when this was discussed last time, 6% was a number that was thrown around. And honestly, I kept under no circumstances saying we can add 50 kids to this school and not have a huge impact to the town.
And, and kind of piggybacking on that, having a discussion, maybe some discussion needs to transpire about our philosophy. Do we take kids that aren't in kindergarten? I mean, I think that's a potential for a discussion as well. Because there, there clearly, if you look at the numbers, are some, some potentials for, for placement.
Except if this BRS enrollment report changes on a monthly rate.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we know that.
That's the worst part.
But if we're going to have the discussions, and we're going to open it to, to a, a larger constituency than just the board members, then there has to be discussion about the philosophy of the program as well. And I think then you would want teacher input, administrative input, and community input in that discussion.
That's an interesting point as well, that, you know, other than kindergarten, grades one through five are the grades that we actually have the, the best numbers on. We, we, you know, we're complaining that we never know who's coming into kindergarten. But in grade one and two, right now, we know that those are, you know, smaller class sizes overall.
Well, they're at the top of our guidelines.
Oh, sorry.
And we did just add a, a class to, to bring those numbers down.
So, I mean, the, the point being is that actually, grades one, two, three, four, and five, where you, where you might be bringing people in for the, you know what those are going to be, moving up more or less. I mean, you know...
Right. Sometimes, sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, so that's, so, so people who move in the middle of the year tend to not bring kindergarteners. People who move in the middle of the year are the ones that bring. So like, when we add 20 kids during the school year, what would you say, 18 are not kindergarten?
The majority are not kindergarten kids. Right. Because you're already...
So it tends to be that.
So, so I think one of the things that we know we have to talk about is school capacity. And we have to talk about that in a much larger environment than the Board of Education because the town is impacted, AMIT is impacted, you know, this is not a discussion, you know, the discussion may start because of the limitations of, of our additional classrooms, but it goes, it goes bigger than that. So, and that is a discussion that we need to have this year and be very clear, you know, to the town about, you know, here's what's, what's the situation? You know, there's going to be money spent wherever it is, whether it's here or somewhere else, you know, because we also, you look at Bethany, they're going way the other way. You know, they're, they're not even putting 50 kids into the middle school anymore. You know, and they used to put 80, you know? So there's, there's changes very, their, their per pupil class is actually higher than ours right now, again, just because of the division. So, you know, so again, there's, it's not just us when we talk about school capacity. But in order to kind of finish tonight, what, what do we need to do? I think we have a motion out, but it's, it's from Claire. So if you need to change it or withdraw it, then we need to do that.
I'll withdraw my motion and let someone else make a motion.
Okay. Does anybody else want to make a motion?
I mean, I'm happy to make the motion that we, for this year, maintain and we're trying to get to a 2% to try to make the 2%. Because essentially, we're saying we have no one graduating from 6th grade this year. And for next year, that would mean that we theoretically wouldn't add anyone into kindergarten. And honestly, I'd rather add kids into kindergarten. So if we have 14 now and no one leaving, that means that next year, we'd be stuck at 14 again unless we make some changes to this, so.
And I would second that, so.
So what are you going to increase it to?
2%, which would add either two or three, depending on where I'm...
2.8.
2.8 kids.
Well, something like that, we would check with the state to make sure that we're using the right years' data, so we, you know, because what we're talking about here is that this,